I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Baker, would you like to start us off with your opening comment this evening?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and ladies and gentlemen of the board and my executive team, the Cabinet. I want to thank you for making sure that we had this opportunity to come together today to look into where we are with the FY19 budget development and adoption process. I wanted to start out by, again, thanking a number of different folks that are both here and those that have, from my perspective, been keen contributors to where we find ourselves today. First, I want to thank the Cabinet group that is in front of you as well as the many staff that are both in the audience and who have supported the development, the adjustments, as well as ultimately the execution and making sure that what we have to utilize is maximized in terms of the budget process. I want to thank all of our staff. We have many different advisories, from teacher advisory to parent advisories to student advisories, all who have helped to inform where we are today, inform and inspire where we are today by providing input and feedback. And lastly, I want to thank this board for your tremendous support over the last few months, your determination in making sure that our staff have what they need and our schools have what they need in order to ultimately provide our students with what they need. Tonight, we find ourselves in, at least in the time that I have had the honor to serve as superintendent here, find ourselves in a much stronger fiscal position than we usually are at this time of year. And that is largely due to the funding support that we have received most recently from our County Board of Supervisors and county government. I want to thank them for their support in making sure that we are able to fund the number one and two priorities that really made up this budget. We say frequently that our business is a people's business, and this is all about making sure that the people that we have who do the good work, who are dedicated and loyal to the cause and to our school division and our students, are provided the support they need through increases in compensation, in this case, supported by the recent pay study and also adjusted in terms of the solutions to maximize what we're able to put towards that compensation proposal. Secondly, to be able to add human resources and target those resources, again, people helping our students within the schools. And tonight, we'll go over both of those, number one and two, goals and priorities for this budget. But I do want to provide a couple of reminders as we go through. First, tonight, you're going to see a potential adjustment, not a negative adjustment, not a major adjustment, but an adjustment just the same that we offer as a recommendation for the board to consider relative to the original compensation proposal. And this adjustment would enable, let me back up. First of all, the reason that this option is possible is for two reasons. One, we have received the majority of the funding we need to close the gap. So again, I thank the folks that are responsible for that. Second, our staff, I want to thank Ms. Gaines, Mr. Treyer, their whole staff for working with human resources to analyze person by person. We had estimates that we worked with from the Evergreen study, but over the last couple of months, and they are close to completing that, they have been able to go one by one to determine exactly, from a payroll perspective, what the impact of each of the recommendations would be. As a result, and Ms. Gaines will explain it a little bit more later, we believe that it is possible with relatively the same amount that has been recommended to go towards compensation that we can provide a minimum 4% pay increase for all support staff, with the exception of those who are on administrative scales, which would mean in this year, which would be, I think, something that a few years ago would not have been imagined, but to be able to provide a 4% pay increase at a minimum to almost all of our employees, again, with the exception of our administrators, but they would also still receive a 2% pay increase. So that is something to comment a little more detail. Also, I wanted to remind you that in March, again, to be responsive to what many in our community were concerned about, as we all were, is we had a presentation that provided greater insight into how we currently work to keep our schools safe and secure. And in that process, you may remember that Mr. Upperco and his staff did reference that in our current capital improvement plan, we still have just a handful of entrances that we are still working to create better security for. We are going to be able to adjust the timing of all those entrances that are still left to have them completed during the 2018-19 school year. It will not increase our debt service, and we are able to do it within the existing allocations. So finally, I think that tonight, our staff will share how we are able to close the very small gap that, at this point, based on projections, as you know, we still do not have an approved state budget, but based on those projections, where we are in terms of the small amount of funding that we will need to find or make adjustments in order to, for you to be able to balance the budget. So again, thank you and appreciate the board's work moving forward. Thank you.
I just want to start by saying, as we're getting nearer to the end of this budget season, this is definitely one of the best financial situations that we've been in since I've been a board member, and I'm very excited to see a budget that was approved by this board that really prioritized staff, schools, and the students. I want to thank Dr. Baker and Cabinet and staff and the fellow board members that supported the budget, as well as the Board of Supervisors that helped agree with our priorities. This approved budget definitely prioritized the increase in compensation and human resources, while it also puts safety at the forefront, especially towards the end of this budget season. And we achieved some fantastic goals in safety-oriented places that we hadn't only hoped to accomplish before. I also want to thank the school board members that worked so hard to help support this budget and Dr. Baker for the last couple of months and helped get it to this point. With that, I would like to hear about those lovely options of closing the gap. Mrs. Gaines, if you can start with 7.01, FY19 revenue updates.
Thank you, Chair Lady Graham, school board members, Dr. Baker and Dr. Martin. What we want to do first is to review with you revenue changes. So I will draw your attention to slide number five. And when you look here, you'll basically see the adopted budget from the locality of 124 million. When you look here at the adjustments, you'll basically see we did have one-time funds of 333,000. When Dr. Baker approved his budget and presented that budget along with the school board, he did include a debt service increase of about 1.5 million. When the county administrator presented on February the 13th, that did include an increase of 1.5. So the last time we met, your gap was 2 million. Based on action taken by the Board of Supervisors on April the 12th, they did increase the appropriation by about 1.8 million. Keep in mind, this amount does include one-time funding of 250,000. Therefore, you're looking at a net increase of 4.4 from the county. So that is your local revenue increase. Now, by way of next steps for the locality, once you approve your budget, staff will reconcile with county staff. Then the supervisors, in the month of May, will look to appropriate the budget. So that is the local budget changes. The next one that you'll see will be on page six. Here, you're basically looking at the state revenue. And when looking at the state revenue, you can basically see, based on our projections, this is based on the governor's budget. When we did have the initial crossover coming from the Senate, we will lose about $40,000. Coming from the House, we would gain 150,000. At this point, we do know that the General Assembly is now in special session, and that could take a week or two. So right now, we still are awaiting a final budget from the state. Nevertheless, based on what we know today, that projected increase from the state is basically 7.4 million dollars, really 7.5 million dollars. So with that, when you look at where we will be for FY '20, we look to receive an additional increase of about 1.3. So that is the state budget in that regard. When you look at page seven, you're basically looking at your federal revenues, and federal revenues basically make a 5% of our budget. And for the most part, you're looking at Title I funds, Title VI funds, et cetera. And those, for the most part, have stayed pretty level. So that brings you to where we are with the gap. When you look at the gap, it was 2 million, based on additional funding provided by the Board of Supervisors. We're looking at a gap of 250,000. So a couple of points we want to point out here. Number one, staff is recommending, by way of closing the gap, we would look at one-time, we would look at non-compensation items that are in the budget currently. So by taking those items and eliminating those and paying with those through year-end funds or carryover, that will bring your gap down to zero. Also, keep in mind, the 1.8 million from the county does include one-time funding of 250,000. What we would do there, too, would be to take non-comp funding that is normally reoccurring, and we would apply that to those funds. So this probably is the most important slide that's before you this evening. So that is slide number eight. Then it brings you to the compensation proposal options. So a couple of things we want to highlight. Number one, when you looked at your budget, your number one goal was to provide pay increases. We did follow a similar pattern as the county. They did look at the composite, the CPI, Consumer Price Index of 2.1. For the teachers, a 4% increase. For staff at that time, other staff, 2%. Also, looking at the Evergreen study, bring to minimum in one year and the Evergreen classification over a three-year period. That brought us up to 967,000. So the total compensation proposal, based on the last time we met, was 6.8. Now, let's look at the next slide. This is another option that the board can consider. So number one, when you look at where we are, teachers still at a 4% pay increase, you're looking at 4.8. When we began to scrub the numbers, a couple of factors you want to look at. Number one, the Evergreen study was done in 2017. We're now looking at a budget of 2019. So two years later, in looking at the Evergreen study of 494 people, 75 of those individuals are no longer with the school division. Makes sense? Basic turnover. Number two, you basically have about 60 individuals that are no longer eligible for the increase because when we worked with Evergreen to scrub the numbers, again, we had to look at hire dates. Based on those hire dates, they were no longer eligible. So when you look at those different factors, we were able to see that the cost of the Evergreen proposal was about 500,000. Knowing that, we began to say, what are some other options? So we scrubbed the numbers even more. We are in a position tonight to give all employees, except for administrators, a total 4% increase. So when we analyze all the numbers line by line, once everyone received a 4% increase, if they still had not reached what Evergreen recommended that they be at, they still received the additional amount up to that. Once those numbers were completed, the total cost of the Evergreen, including the 2%, was about a million. So we're able to achieve this with an additional $57,000. So we wanted to share that with you, and at this time, if you have any questions. One way that you can consider, looking at that 57,000 additional amount of funds, looking at where we are with ADM. Right now, based on our March 31st ADM, we're looking at students of 23,174. We are projecting for next year's budget, 23,175. But we do know students do come and they do go. Staff would feel very comfortable increasing that ADM number by about 11 students, and that would cover the $57,000. So based on the additional analysis that has been completed, we thought it would be useful to provide you with what would be the average percent increase by employee category. So the first category that you see here, number one, would be administrators, 2%. When looking at your bus aides, you're looking at 9%, primarily because of the Evergreen bring the minimum. Bus drivers, 4%. Your cafe managers and workers, 6%. Your clerical staff, 4%. Same thing with your custodians. Your maintenance workers, your nurses, pair educators, 6%. Teachers, we talked about the 4%. When you look at your ITAs, you're looking at 8%, and then other technology staff, 4%. So we did want to provide you with that level of detail. Now, what are some of the benefits of the 4% if the school board would be interested in moving in that direction? Number one, it provides majority of the employees with a minimum of a 4% increase. Also, it provides employees with additional VRS benefits through a salary increase, which is payable for a lifetime. Most importantly, it does increase the offset of the health insurance increases. So we thought that was very important. And then also, we've taken the same approach as the county, the three-step approach. So at this time, if there are any questions you want to ask staff regarding the initial proposal or even the revised proposal?
Ms. Gaines, I want to thank you for the work that you and your staff put in to brief us and prepare us for making this decision. On slide 12, or page 12, we have a listing by categories of an increase by each particular occupation. Is these, are these numbers assuming that we adopt a 4% or the course of action that you stated that we needed $57,000 for?
Yes, sir.
So that's what these numbers are assuming?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And let me see if I had another question. I just wanted to... No, I had no other questions. Thank you.
Dr. Maier.
And Mrs. Gaines, then, would we also not assume that we could add 11 students on our ADM figure, our March 31st calculated figure, that would give us the revenue to offset the 57,000?
Yes, sir. We could, we would feel very comfortable doing so.
Thank you.
Mr. Twick.
I'd just like to point out that from our original superintendent's proposal, we were offering 4% for teachers and 2% for all other staff. That incorporated the $5 million gap that we had at that time. And I just want to note that, just in case supervisors have any qualms about that issue, but having heard what you stated, I got to believe that we could support that equitably and move forward and get those other staff out of the red and into the black after the insurance adjustment from their 2% pay raise. Now it's 4%. I think that, too, will be equitably equitable for everybody, and I'm excited about that opportunity. Thank you for the data.
I'd like also, just as a follow-up to that, I want to make sure that it's clear, and I think it is, but I want to restate that what was presented to the county in terms of the breakdown of the gap, particularly as it relates to the estimates for the compensation proposal, are relatively unchanged. This is really a revised recommendation for how to direct the very funding that we were requesting. It has not changed the ultimate substance of it. But I think also, even from the feedback that we have received from many, it ultimately comes down to, with what has been provided based on the request, what is the best thing to do for our employees, both in the short term and the long term? And we do not anticipate, as the last few years, this board has made adjustments in the modernization of our health insurance to provide savings. We do not anticipate that type of adjustment in terms of increased rates in the coming years. So for this particular year, we think it does help especially some employees to better offset, and again, it'll be dependent upon what plan they are on and their situation, but we do believe that it will be in the best interest of our employees moving forward.
Any further questions on the compensation aspect of this?
Mrs. Gaines, you may continue.
So if we move on now to the five-year health insurance modernization plan, as you know, in working with both finance and HR, we've been working with the Employee Compensation Focus Group that Dr. Baker created almost three years ago. Also, at Dr. Baker's request, HR and finance have conducted so far two of the four health insurance education sessions. And you can basically see here on the screen what the topics have been, in terms of premium changes, plan design changes. We did share with them the five-year health insurance plan. We talked about some scenarios and open enrollment. One of the questions that we did receive in sharing this information was, could any consideration be provided to also provide support staff with a 4% pay raise? So that is something that we did crunch the numbers for, and we have presented this evening. We do have another session coming up, April 26th, at Riverbend at 4:30, and we're going to do a special session for the transportation personnel on April 27th. As indicated, over the last two years in working with Employee Compensation Focus Group, we have saved a cumulative of 3.6 million, and these funds have been rerouted for other budget priorities. That brings us to goal number two, as presented in Dr. Baker's budget, basically, resources to support student success. The school board is already very familiar with these 60 positions and where they're located. So what we're attempting to do is to provide you with a summary here on page 19, and then you will see on page 20, a more detailed itemization, broken down by the costs as well, and this is fully loaded with salaries and benefits. The good news, based on where we are today, the principals and HR is very excited to get out and start the recruiting process so that we can have everyone on board. So that is on page 20. Next, page 22, this will take you to the department requests. Keep in mind, here, which is line number one, instruction non-comp, this is where we're recommending to you this evening for consideration, is that with that gap of 250,000, that we would reduce 250,000 of the 354 that you see here. These are non-comp items. You only have three options with a budget our size, 85% being salaries and benefits. It either would be positions to resolve the gap, it would be programs or non-comp. And this evening, staff is recommending non-comp. So again, you can see a listing of these various positions in terms of what staff have requested. When you look at page 23, these are primarily our programs. These are what were included in your school board-approved budget, so you're very familiar with these. Also, for your CIP for FY19, you can see that that number is 30.8 million at the bottom. That brings us to next steps, in terms of, based on information shared this evening, does the board feel that an additional budget work session is needed? After that, what staff would do, would work with you to have your budget adopted. So then we'll be working with the county to reconcile the numbers, and then the supervisors will appropriate the funds. And then, once we have an approval of the budget, we would be able to move very quickly and begin to work on our contracts and release those, recognizing that we do have a very short summer. So as soon as we can get started, the better. And then with the positions that you saw this evening, recruiting and hiring those new staff.
Ms. Shelley.
Thank you. Thank you for all the details. This was wonderful. I do have a question about the health insurance meetings. Have they been well attended?
So the first meeting, you know, we're math people, we love numbers, so we did our count, Ms. Shelley. So our first meeting, we had 42. Our next meeting, we did have 26. So we would like to say that they were well attended. Also, Ms. Colbert, what she did do, she did provide the presentation in advance, and based on that, we have many individuals who have reviewed that, and they've called in with some questions, and that was an excellent idea, excellent idea. So kudos to our superintendent.
Thank you. And then we'll, after all of them, well, you said they had the presentation, so never mind, that question is null and void. I think that was it. I like everything I'm seeing here. I really like everything I'm seeing here. I really like that 4% for everyone. We had discussed, I like that. I'm so glad that we were able to do that. And with the ADM, because I know last year, we ended with a low ADM, but yet we started the year with a lot more, how many more students did we start the year?
It was like 222.
That's what I was thinking. So if we have an ADM of over 19, we could start the year again with another 200 more students. Wow. But something like that could easily happen. So I like what staff is doing with that. Dr. Baker, that was good thinking. Thanks.
Dr. Maier.
On page 22, your first item on non-comp for instruction, are we really reducing or are we deferring it? Because if you're using year-end, we would be able to restore it.
Correct. So we're actually, we're deferring it, and that is the answer. It's a deferment because those items are still items that we need.
Correct. Okay. That's why I wanted to clarify, because I heard reduce, and that's different.
And I think the board will probably be familiar that the, you know, the ugly truth of it is that every year for the past few budget cycles, instruction has, you know, put in requests to have what we would like to be recurring lines in certain areas of non-comp instruction, particularly in areas such as assessment solutions or textbooks or any number of things. We have continued to function year to year with one-time funds and have been able to put that together. And in many cases, it can serve that purpose because they may be slightly different items each year. But we have become accustomed to managing that through carryover. And then, again, the one-time funding that has been allocated to us by the Board of Supervisors does enable us to not be cut too short in those areas. So again, thank our instruction folks for their continued resourcefulness.
Madam Chair, you went over, Mrs. Gaines, you went over the revenues, and you mentioned the Senate version and the House version. That's what they're deliberating this week, correct?
Yes, that is correct. So when you look at the budget that you see this evening, it is based on the governor's budget. When they did have crossover back in February, when we did the, when Mr. Treyer looked at the numbers, we would lose 40,000 from the state, but we would gain from the House. So I did... And all he was really able to share is that currently they are starting the special session this week, and they will continue their process. And he also did share that, once they have completed their work, it takes them about 10 days even before they can give us the state template. So the earliest, we may be looking to receive something around May.
Okay. With that, Madam Chair, I really don't see the need for us to have an additional work session on the 30th, because whatever comes forth out of the action of the General Assembly would be able to be incorporated later through a budget amendment, because it's going to be strictly state funds.
That's right.
And it could easily handle what was deferred of the non-comp, or even address other needs. So with that, I think the first item would be, I don't see the need for an additional work session. The second item is, I think it would behoove us as a board to adopt the budget this evening with the recommended changes, for the reason that we know that as soon as staff can begin the hiring process, we would be losing at least 30 days before they can hit it again. And I'd like to see staff with the ability to be able to contract those people now, rather than wait and then bring it to us in 30 days. Because I know also, the preparation for contracts takes extensive amount of work, and the sooner we can put those contracts in the hands of our teachers and support staff, the sooner staff will know where we are on available positions, and then we'd be able to start filling those positions. So I think there's two points to my thinking. One, I don't see the budget session, additional budget session as being necessary. And two, I don't see any reason why we couldn't adopt the budget this evening. And if you wish, I'll make that motion to that effect.
I think we have some other closing comments, and then we can come back to your motion. Dr. Meyer, are you okay with that? Mrs. Phelps, do you have anything to comment?
Yeah, I do. Thank you so much for crunching the numbers. My concern was the negative net pay impact to the staff, and I see right here through what you just presented to us, that that would help out. And so I feel good about it. I do, and I appreciate everything that you guys put into it to crunch the numbers and, you know, help the staff out and employees that I heard from. And I'm really grateful for it. Thank you so much. Yeah, so that's all I have to say. But thank you for your hard work, everybody. Thanks.
Mr. Braswell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I want to, I concur with Dr. Meyer's assessment for the need of having another budget work session. I don't believe that it's necessary, and that I would be in support of adopting the budget this evening. I wanted to thank, again, staff for their hard work, especially in the area of health insurance. Health insurance is a personal thing. It's, people get really attached to their health insurance and their leary of making adjustments and changes to their health insurance. And we need to continue, as you've already started, impressing upon our employees that we have to make adjustments in the way we do business. We can't do business in the same way we used to. That there are more innovative products that are going to be presented in the future, and that they have to be very open-minded about receiving these innovative products, because they're not only beneficial for the division, but they're actually very beneficial for them. They just have to make sure that they have an open mind to receive the benefits, or to listen to the benefits, so that both sides can win. So I just want to say that about health insurance. I recognize it's a very difficult thing to do, that you have to keep plugging away at it, and we need to keep saying for the dais and from wherever else we can, that having or maintaining obsolete health insurance is not beneficial to anyone. So I just want to thank you for that. I am so delighted and excited that we can actually say goodbye to the activity fee. It's something that has been a crawl in my side, and I'm so excited that that's going to go away. Young people should not have any barriers in participating in extracurricular activities in our school system. And so I'm really excited that even though it took time, we managed to do it incrementally, but we finally sunset the activity fees, and I'm thankful for that. But I'm also concerned, though, that the athletic fees, the things, the coaches, young coaches that spend time with our students, we are still 10 years behind, even though we got them caught up to the cuts, the 20% cuts that were going on during the depression, or, I mean, the recession. We're still 10 years behind, and we need to continuously push for increases in activity stipends for our coaches. They play a major role in our ability to educate young people. And the athletic fields, the theater and other activities that we pay stipends for really enhance the learning. It is truly the laboratory of what we actually do. And so I want us to be mindful of the coaching stipends in the future, that because we got back to a point where we made our original cuts, it's not the end of the story. I'm excited about subrates increases. We have to maintain competitive subrates, not just because we want to be able to replace teachers that go out, you know, or need to have someone fill in for them in class. Subrates and having great subs in the school are an excellent recruiting tool. We get an opportunity to see firsthand some of the teachers that we may, or not necessarily just teachers, but others, that we want to have working with our children on a day-to-day basis. And we get to audition them, and we get the very best and brightest, because our rates are competitive and they want to come and work at Spotsylvania County Schools. So I'm really excited about all of these things, and I'm really excited about the fact that we can offer to all of our employees a 4% increase. I am emphatic about the fact that we need to have teacher pay at a point where we are very competitive in the region, because it's a supply and demand game. And we need to make sure that we offer the very competitive packages to make our recruiting much more efficient and effective for Spotsylvania County Schools. Madam Chair, I conclude my comments.
Mr. Tepig, do you have some closing comments?
Are we going to talk about CIP funds here in a few minutes?
We had an update in Dr. Baker's open statement.
I'll restate that, but we'll certainly answer any questions that you may have relative to the CIP plan. But what the board had approved back in January is relatively the exact same CIP that we would be moving forward with, with the exception of the, we had a handful of entrances that were scheduled based on their complexity, not just their cost, for years other than FY '19. We have, based on a lot of things coming together, including the tools that help support those entrances with new cameras and voice-over IP, several things that are connected on all fronts. I have urged our folks, and they've been very receptive, and I appreciate that. But they also want to work on getting all of those entrances completed during the course of the 2018-19 school year. So those will be moved up to that year if they are in another year. And rather than specify them out, I just want to give that generally. And so, based on other projects that are still, I guess, carryover funds, we can do that without any increase in our debt service.
Good. Thank you for that explanation. That's one of two issues that I have had with our initial budget. One is, is that those entrances had to be moved up to the front of the CIP line before we spend dollar one on everything else. And it sounds like we're aggressively pushing that direction, and I appreciate that, Dr. Baker, for you to push that and working with our good staff to make that happen. And we'll be looking forward to that, and I'm sure we'll be able to have a strong success rate to discuss a year from now. The other thing is, the pay raise for some of our service personnel put them in the negative, and it encourages me that with little adjustment, we're able to put everybody in the positive, all of our entire staff. And those are my, were my two big concerns, and I appreciate, again, everybody's efforts to help us push that into the positive, and again, under Dr. Baker's leadership. Thank you.
Mr. Blaine.
Couple of brief comments. This is the seventh year on our board here, and I think this is the best, without any question, contract that we're able to agree to and to pass. And it gives me a lot of pleasure to be able to say that. The comments that have been made by all of my colleagues are right on, but this enables us, and I think what we see is the growth that has been possible in our division. We're giving more kids, more opportunities all the time. Our children have more choice in this public school system. We are now offering, as you know, our International Baccalaureate Program. There's a terrific dynamism in the Cour and Tech Center, and Keith Wolf has been pushing that. We're going to see increased opportunities for our children there, giving them more choice again. There are about 86,000 jobs available today in the state of Virginia that are unfillable, because we do not have students trained, and that's what our CTE is working at. And we're all, this kind of a budget enables that to take place. And our management team, frankly, is looking ahead. When you see us able to put, and I really can't include myself in us there, but our professional staff has done an outstanding job in assembling and figuring out how to allocate these funds. As a result, I too happen to agree, there's no need for an additional meeting, and I think that we ought to vote on this this evening. Thank you.
Just want to say that I agree with that. I just want to sum up the budget that we were able to accomplish before we vote on it. We were, this revised changes emphasizes security in this, with the CIP changes. We were able to give all employees a 4% increase, 2% increase for admin. We were able to get the 28 instruction contracted positions, 24 special education positions, eight technology ITAs, which we know we've needed. Some of those contract positions are therapists and school psychologists, and those things that can help us with the mental health epidemic we're facing. This budget was actually able to do a lot of things, and counting on a couple more ADM to fund it, I think is pretty easy. And this year, though, when we get that shocking number of 200 increase in enrollment, we'll be prepared, because we have some extra staff that we've planned for, where last year, we had cut staff to make the budget work, and we're faced with an extra 220 upon enrollment. So that was a very tough thing to deal with. We dealt with that this year. This year, we're able to be ahead of the curve. So I really think that is a wonderful improvement. I think that we need to keep encouraging employees to go to our health insurance seminars to make sure that they're on the best plan for them, to make sure they're getting the most out of their pay raises. And I just, as Barron said, happy to eliminate that activity fee, and always happy to increase the subrates, because we have to stay competitive. And we're definitely, we're able to include the Activity Bus Pilot Expansion, which is near and dear to my rural district, and I'm happy about that. And I'm still thrilled that we were able to really provide for our in-house custodian transition that I'm happy that we have done. So with that summary, I think Dr. Meyer wanted the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And if someone would second the motion, and we could have a roll call vote, we can move on with adopting the budget.
Motion by Dr. Meyer to adopt the budget that was previously adopted with these modifications.
I will second that.
Second by Mr. Blaine and Ms. Shelley. Roll call starting with Ms. Shelley.
Shelley, aye.
Meyer, aye.
Phelps, aye.
Braswell, aye.
Twigg, aye.
Blaine, aye.
Grant, aye. Congratulations.
We need to compliment yous while we have to do.
Yeah, thank you, staff. May I say?
Ms. Shelley.
Well, thank you, staff. Thank you, Dr. Baker. Thank you, board. And thank you, everybody that's helped with this. But I have a question about now. Now that we have adopted the budget, when are we going to start posting and recruiting for all these wonderful positions? Right now? Probably soon.
Yeah, this week, we will begin to post some positions. Some of those positions, as you may know, we are trying to move away from contracted services to save costs. So that speaks to, as we know, in our teacher area, there are shortages in many of those areas. So we do want to be aggressive in getting the word out and recruiting for those positions right away.
Budget is complete, so we will now be moving on to item number eight, our Head Start training for our school board members. But I don't think she's here yet, so we might need to be in a recess. We will recess until Ms. Miller joins us for our Head Start training. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. We are now in open session. So that brings us to item number eight, Head Start Training for School Board Members. Mrs. Miller.
Good evening. My name is Dawn Miller. I'm the coordinator for Head Start. I also work very closely with Michael Mudd and the Virginia Preschool Initiative Program, which we call VPI. So I'm here this evening to fulfill one of our performance standards from the government. We are federally funded, and we have, we operate through program performance standards. The government likes to make sure that we are reminded that this is the law for taking their money. So we're very careful about that, and we take notes on them all the time. And in our new performance standards, they've asked that we do, we've always had school board training, but it was, I usually did it when we had new school board members. It now will be annually, and this is my second time in front of you, to do the annual Head Start training. I have given you a packet to make it a little easier to follow along, and you'll have, the first one you have has actual highlight on it. If you want to open up your packet and find the first document that has highlight. So what I did with this document is I made it in 2016, which we have to talk about what the responsibilities are of the governing bodies. In Head Start, in performance In Head Start, in performance standards, you are, you are called the governing body. We refer to you as the school board. I did, I have in the first paragraph that I paraphrase from the performance standards and the Head Start Act from December of 2007 to reflect the relevant standards. These standards are written for programs all over the country, and school division grantees look a little different than perhaps a YMCA or Department of Social Services that might have a grant. So it does, it is a little different. So instead of writing everything on this document that I have for us, I paraphrased it. So I have, on program governance, and the 1301s are in the performance standards, it's the numbers that have the program operations. So program governance, and the next part that you see that's highlighted, is that the grantee, which is the school division, we must establish and maintain a formal structure for program governance that includes a governing body, a policy council, and a parent committee. Governing bodies have a legal and fiscal responsibility to administer and oversee the grantee's Head Start program. Policy council is responsible for the direction of the Head Start program. So in everything that I tell you this evening, the most important words that the government wants you to know as the governing body, as a school board, is that you are the legal and fiscal responsibility to administer the Head Start program. So the rest of the document kind of tells how you do that and how we share information among each other. The composition of a governing body, because we are a school board and you are elected, we do not have to fulfill, we're sort of exempt from all of the things that they have us in the act. The act spells out all the different types of people that we have to have on the board. But because we're elected, we are taken care of on that. And actually, we do really well as far as what they ask for. A financial person, education person, lawyers, seeing things like that. So we do really well with the elected school board and also the accompanying people that help us. On page two, this is directly from, anything that is in the bold is directly from the standards. So the governing body, body shall, and I'm just going to read you the, the first part there. The legal and fiscal responsibility, as I mentioned, that's what they always want you to know. Adopt practices that assure active, independent, and informed governance. Fully participate in the development, planning, and evaluation of Head Start, and be responsible for ensuring compliance with federal laws and regulations and state and local laws. That is your duties and responsibilities. And then you are responsible for these, all of those other activities there. If you want to just take a moment and glance over them, I'm not going to read them all to you. You will recognize some of the things in there as the things that I present to you monthly in the information items. The Head Start Grant that you approve every year has a lot of those items in there. And then occasionally, you will get, as you got this document at one point in time. And some of the other documents in the packet will be familiar to you as well. So when I need something that you, that I need you to review, it comes into the school board information, or it comes to be approved. On page three, I just wanted to bring to your attention that we are supposed to have advisory committees, especially health, but they're, they can be established by the school board when they are deemed necessary. So at this point, you have not deemed any committees necessary to me, to Head Start. However, we are very, an active member of the SHAB Spotsylvania Health Advisory Board, and we also are very active in the Virginia Head Start Health Advisory Committee. So I, I believe that our program is up to date on all of the health things that we need to learn about through those two organizations. So we don't have a separate health advisory. I'm comfortable with the two entities that we are involved with. The next several pages are about policy council and policy committee. I didn't, I didn't highlight any of that. This is free for you to read when you would like. Again, I'm going to just say that policy council in our organization looks, it operates a little differently than perhaps a YMCA, because they actually would have to make policy. And that's the name of the, of the group, a policy committee, policy council. It also has a policy committee, which is also known as a parent committee, which meets at the classroom level. So in an, in a program that is not a school board, a school division, you would have parents at the classroom level coming up with policy, or ideas, or things that they would like to, to change, or do, or put into place. Then they would take that to policy council, and then policy council would take that to the governing body. Now, what I love about a school division grantee is that we have all these policies in place. I know that they've been read and vetted, and I know that they're legal, and that makes me feel really, really comfortable. And I really like that about being a school division and grantee. And anytime, like if you ever look in, in my books, you're going to see school board policy J, school board policy. As soon as I see something in here, I try to make sure that I can relate it to the school board policy, because I really believe that that's a better way to make policy, rather than parents. We have had on occasion, when parents will come from another program, and mostly what they, they want things like, we want, we want our kids to ride a different bus home. You know, we only have the Head Start dedicated buses, or we want our kids to, it's mostly something that they want their children to do, that we know for health and safety is not always the best appropriate thing. So we just have the conversations with the parents about why we have the, the rules that we have, and we haven't had any concerns. But I really, really like being a school division grantee. I, I love having those policies that, when a red reviewer asks me about procurement, I just get out the school board docs, and I say, here's our procurement. If they ask me about the safety of the buildings, crisis response plans, I say, this is what we have in the building. So it's really, makes it, I really like that a lot. And it's very helpful, and I think it's just really, has a lot of integrity. So those are the, what, on page three and four are what policy council and parent committee do. On page five, the highlight is the training, which is what we're doing today. And I, I'm going to, we do have to do specifically the training on eligibility, which I will go over in just a moment. But the highlight on 1301.5 is that our training that you're receiving this evening. 1301.6 is impasse. This is something that you also get on, in the information. You have it in your packet. And it is towards the back of your packet. We have to have a written policy. If the policy council and the school board did not agree on something, which in our case, it, we don't really have that concern because we have school board, a school board. And so we usually just explain to them what the school board policies are. So we have never had to use that. However, we do have to have that in writing, and you do have that in your packet. On page six, Head Start Act in December of 2007, and all of those bold from A to I, we, we have to supply to you. So I know many times I have the question, especially from new school board members, as to why we would be giving you the credit card receipts for only the Head Start program in this entire school division. And that is why, because according to the performance standards, we have to show the governing body what we're, what we're using our credit card for. So you get those monthly. You also get the program monthly report, and that's going to tell you all of these other things in here, like how many meals that we served through USDA, our program enrollment reports, a little bit about what the program is accomplishing, and the program information reports, which are something that you also get in August, because that goes to Congress. And anything that we get from, I get things all the time from the Office of Head Start, and you, you get those also. And so I have to sort of sift through those. Information memorandum, I do not have to necessarily share with all the school board members. A program instruction, I have to share with all school board members. So every once in a while, you'll have an ACF, Administration for Children and Families, with some numbers behind it, and that is a program instruction that all governing body have to see. And I will include that on the monthly packet. Sometimes it relates to our program, and sometimes it does not. I do show all of that to policy council as well. So the next two paragraphs underneath that bold is just telling you how you get that information, which is through the monthly information items that are on the school board packet that come to you. And on page seven, you are, governing body is to be a part of the planning, which is, all the planning is included in the refunding application. So all of those bullets, all of those were included just last month, the April 9th school board meeting, actually this month. When you approved this, the, the Head Start refunding application, all of those items were inclusive in that document that you got. And that is an abbreviated version. Next year is a five-year grant renewal, and it'll be much larger. Any questions on that before we move to the, the eligibility training?
We need a grant in order to operate the Head Start.
That's correct.
And do we make a dollar grant every year? Or do we just look at the number of potential enrollees and base our grant application on the number of available or expected enrollees?
The grant was given, given to us in 2008 as a relinquishment grant from the city of Fredericksburg. It was given to us with 121 slots for children. And then over the year, I was able to bring in one more child, which they called to tell me that I, that I, what was the words that they told me? That I added to our enrollment without permission. One child. Because the funding is for 121. So I had to write a narrative that we ran through policy council so that we could pick up that one extra child, because the way that we had the classrooms, we could put another child in. So they told me that I had expanded. That was it. You did expansion without the money. So the only way you can actually do expansion is if there are grants available and out there, and they send out information that there are grants available. We did get word that there's going to be grants available for expansion of early Head Start, which we do not have. They're going to have expansion for the early, the child partnerships that you partner with a private daycare. And they're going to have grants for duration, which we already applied for two years ago and received, and that increased our grant. And then we do get COLA grants in, every once in a while, but we do not, we haven't had expansion for Head Start, existing Head Start programs, we have not had.
So we have about 150, did I understand?
We have 122 children.
122. How many children live in Spotsylvania, in our school division, that are potential Head Start, who need Head Start? We got 120.
So, and then what, Virginia Preschool Initiative serves 139 children. So we are serving 261 children.
How many children are there that should be served?
Well, if you want to, we can, I can give you the waitlist numbers. As far as knowing who's out there, the, the state has a, has a formula, and I think they have, they, we have about 300 that the state says that we have, using their formula. On our, using our applications that we have in-house right now, we have 93 applications on the waitlist right now. However, 23 of those 93 are actually income-eligible for a Head Start program, which is the poverty level. So 23, if we had a Head Start class, would go right into Head Start, depending on location too, as well, the way that.
I guess what I'm.
So some of that, then, an additional 51 of those would be eligible for Virginia Preschool Initiative.
I guess what I'm asking is, as you look at our population, if they could all qualify and we had the space, how many should we be serving? How many kids in our community? We, we have, what, about 1,800 kids annually start kindergarten?
I don't have that number for you. I would, I would, I would think that the state's formula for deciding that is pretty close to what, what we would have, which is about 350, 360? I'm not, I'm not quite sure of that number.
So that's the total number of children that are in need of Head Start in Spotsylvania?
Yep. That is for VPI, because the VPI families can make almost double the income of a Head Start family, which is why we have our, we keep our waitlist broken up according to income.
Good. Thank you.
Carol, if you want to look up the VDOE and VPI, they'll have that number there. It's, I think it's over three, it's either 361 or 391. I'm sorry that I didn't bring that number. Now, as far as me knowing in the community, how many children are really out there, I don't have that information.
Yeah, no, I was looking for an estimate, that's all.
The estimate from VPI. I'm, I'm really, I should have brought that number.
That's, that's fine. That's adequate.
So we're serving 261. Any other questions before we move to eligibility? So you have to be trained on eligibility as a governing body. However, I really was very careful in what I read, because training on eligibility is about a half a day. So it looks like the bottom line is, I would like for you to take a look at, and you do, you do receive this usually around February. If you would look in your packet, it should be the second document. It's the application. This does come through for you. You don't have to approve this, but you do have to review it, and it was sent to you either January or February. And that is what we ask the families for. It is a Head Start performance standard that we take this information in person. So even if we put this online, we still have to see these families in person.
Do you sometimes have to help families to fill out the application as well?
All the time. We have the application totally in Spanish, and we have to help the Hispanic families as well. Yes, we, we, we help them a lot. But we are careful in our program, and Mr. Braswell knows this because he's been with us for a while. We're very careful to just support and help our families, but we try very, we, we still want them to be responsible and to learn how to do these pieces, so that when they move on to public, to the kindergarten, that they're not relying on us to, to help them apply for kindergarten and get all their documents. We certainly say, here's your documents, put them in this, in a folder, and don't lose them, because you're going to need them when you register for kindergarten. So we, we, we support them a lot, but we, we still want them to learn responsibility as well. Because we can get their birth certificates, and we can get photo IDs, and we can go online and see who paid their taxes on their residence. And we can do a lot of that, and we do a lot of that for them. But we also ask them to do the first part as well. The next part of, in your packet is the, is the salmon color, orange color. I would like for you to take a look at it. And that is really what we're, what we're really going to focus on for your eligibility training. This document, as you will first see, it does not have the child's name on it. So we have an application number. We have just the date of birth, and then we have that one box. It tells us if they're categorically eligible, which be foster children, children receiving temporary assistance for needy families. Then we have if they are income-eligible for Head Start, or income-eligible for VPI. And if they're over, then we would write what they're over by. We put a dollar amount in there of what they are over. And then we have on the, on the right side, it tells us exactly where they are. Now, the reason that we break this up so much is because VPI can accept families at or below 200% of the federal poverty guideline. Head Start is at 100%. Then we break them up into 101 to 130, and then as you can see those. So what we do this for is if we have the waitlist for Head Start, we take all the poverty-level families. For VPI, we then try to fill in with the families. Still, if we have, if we had them at 100%, we put them in VPI as well. So, and then we start to do incrementally. When the VPI classes haven't filled, then we'll go into the 101 to 130, and then we'll go into the 131 to 200, and then we'll, we have to go above 200 for children that might have IEP. So we still put the families in incrementally, trying to find the neediest families, and trying to make sure that we serve the neediest families. We're very thorough on this, because we're always looking for the authentic story of the family. the family. And we probably ask more questions than the government wants us to, but we're really trying to, to really reach the people that really need the program. Then from there, you can see we have points attached to risk factors. The risk factors come from a community needs assessment, they come from different types of research, they come from talking to, hearing from families. We also talk to our family service workers. Usually once a year, we say, what are you hearing in the families? And of course, you know, right now, we're hearing about the drug, the opioid, hearing that. We're also hearing, but from, we now have children that are being just dropped off and they're not even grandparents or aunts and uncles. So we're having, we're watching this and we're having a little bit of an increase and they're just being raised by family, by friends. So we need to, that's something that we, it's come to our attention, so we will watch that and probably put that in as a risk factor as that goes up. Of course incarcerated parent has been there for a while, teen parent at the time of the Head Start child's birth. So we look at this every year. Policy council, Mr. Braswell's been some, we've had some interesting discussions on some of these, when the parents talk to us about that. Military deployed came from the VPI guidelines. So we put, because we are a single point of entry. Military deployed in Tidewater area is a much larger risk factor, because they're more enlisted. Here, we seem to have not as many enlisted. Any questions on the selection criteria? Yes?
I just had a question on the, it was still probably more in the numbers category, but the peer models for our VPI classes are not counted in the numbers.
They are.
They are counted in the numbers.
Yes.
Okay.
Ms. Grant was talking about, we have three early childhood special education inclusion classes. We have three of them in the county and the makeup of them is, to be a true inclusion class, it has to be 50% children with a disability and 50% typically developing. So they have six or seven children with, with IEPs. And then we have four community models, which are, they just come from the general public and ECSE goes through those, I'm not sure if they have an application, but they select those children. And then three of those children are VPI children. And then we will, we, we actually handpick the VPI children that have not been selected because, you know, if we're putting them into an inclusion class, we have to kind of really kind of feel that through and see if they're going to be a good fit. So those children are included in the 139 that are served.
Ms. Grant, if I may add, we are looking into the possibility of looking at the reverse mainstreaming to see if there's a way of adding additional VPI students, so that we would end up with additional funding for those children, as well as the opportunity to have access to preschool. So that is something we're currently exploring.
And I usually call those VPI parents and personally explain to them what it looks like. And we have a really good, I'm really proud to say that we haven't had anybody join and then not want to stay in the class. So that's, we feel good about that, because, you know, you just have to explain that they're not going into the regular Head Start or VPI class. Okay. We did speak about impasse procedures already. And then the last document is a management of program data. That was also something that came new in the performance standards, that we had to tell the government what we're doing with all of our data. And if you will just take a really brief look, you're going to see school board policy all over this document. So this was, you know, exactly what I was saying, is I didn't have to make up procedures for Head Start and not, just, you know, who am I to make these up? Even though many, many directors make up these policies. I've worked very closely with Ms. Bowler, we, following the Library of Virginia's schedule. And so this just makes me really happy that I have all this school board policy and so when the Office of Head Start asked for this. So the only thing that's not on here, which will be on here shortly, is I needed to tell them what happens to the drum in a, in a printer, copier, that we have from Rico, because we're getting ready to get a new one. And so Rico has, or the new company said that they will actually, whoever takes our machine away, clears that drum and gives it to us. And then I don't know what I'm going to do with it then, but, so I will have that last piece of information that, that we needed on this, because copiers store all that information.
Okay, so that's for privacy.
Yes, yes. I believe that there was an incident somewhere in the country where somebody took that drum in a Head Start program. And they actually, we're not supposed to take social security numbers, but they, they had them of children, children's social security numbers, and then they used, they used that information.
I guess I'd like to find out, you know, how do we go about disposing of that or destroying that at some point?
When I get it and we see what it looks like and then we can, you know, see what we need to do with that.
Yeah, I mean, to make sure it's properly done as well.
Right, absolutely, yeah. But right now, I was just happy to know that the copier company was familiar with me asking for something like that.
Would that be something that could go with our, like our, in that record storage area? That disposal?
Mr. Braswell, I was going to say that the Library of Virginia specifies certain types of approaches that you use to destroy information. This would fall under that digital piece that has to be destroyed. And what we would do is basically consult them and find out specifically how that information would be destroyed, because it is different than it would be with hard type of things. Because even like on a hard drive or something like it, or we call it the, the digital vault where email and things like it go, you can delete things off your computer, but it doesn't disappear. But there is a way that that can be done. We just have to check with them. First of all, find out exactly what that is and find out how to properly destroy. Also, the right time, when it can be destroyed.
Right, right. And I guess what we need to do is make sure she knows.
Yeah.
Yes. I work really closely with Ms. Bowler. Anytime we have records and stuff, so yes. I just wanted to just comment briefly about VPI, because I know the question does come about. VPI is, most of you know, is state-funded. And it's also, now, VPI, you do have the opportunity to gather up more children if you would like. You don't have to wait for the state to say that we're going to give you money. So that money is accessible if you can do the match from a school board. So there's other, and space and things like that. But for Head Start, we stay where we are until they actually put money out there. But we were really pleased to have the duration grant, which was really nice and they actually made an exception for us, because I said, we're not going to only let 40% of our children come for the extra 20 days. We're not going to do that as a program. And so they let me apply for 100%, which was not what we were supposed to. And then the other thing I think most of you know about, that I was very excited about, was we were able, there was money last year that was just out there that was left over and we had, we were able to request two school buses. And they're here and I've seen them at the transportation lot. So that was exciting. That was the first time that we, that money was available to actually get out there and get two school buses. And that's the end of your annual Head Start training, if there's any other questions.
Yeah, I have a couple. How do you advertise for people? How do you find the potential enrollees who may not know anything about it, probably are illiterate in many cases and so on?
Our biggest source of advertising is with the Department of Social Services and the Health Department. So we have our applications there. We have them, you know, hard copy where parents can pick them up. And we work really closely with the Department of Social Services. And so we refer families back and forth all the time. We put, we have it on the website. We have it in the libraries. And you can't really, there's places now that you can't really leave things like you used to be able to, you know, like at Food Lion. But the word does get out, we take about 400 applications. We, we put some on Rover when, I think when Rover went out somewhere, we've given them some. And we take them to any kind of event, you know, we'll have them. We have them, if the schools have an event, they, all the schools have them too. And we take a lot of phone calls. The word does seem to get out about, and our new location is really good. People know where we are and Department of Social Services sends them to us. I would say our biggest referral source is the Department of Social Services, because we're working with the same families.
I would just like, I just have a comment, because I go to pretty much all the policy council meetings and I'm a.
He does, I'm sorry.
I have a lot of, I already asked my question. So I just wanted to just commend you for all the work that you do with Head Start. For those that don't know, you're very passionate about your calling as Director of Head Start and you do an excellent job. And I want to say that for everyone to hear it, because I actually believe that's true. I am thankful that for the past five years, as I've been on this board, that I've had an opportunity to work with you and work very closely with you. I've learned a lot from you. And so I tell my other board members that for the last three years of my term, I will continue to be on the Head Start Committee and I'm not leaving. But thank you very much for the work that you do, especially for the children that we serve. And I am very confident that our children are getting their very best because of your passion for what you do. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much. There's a lot of support from the school board. I always hear that, always hear, early childhood, thankful for that as well.
I want to say thanks to Dawn also, because when I first came on the school board, the first two years, I worked with Dawn on Head Start and then Barron followed me. It's an eye-opener to be able to see all the services that Head Start provides. It's a shame that there isn't, there aren't sufficient funds out there to be able to provide the same level of services in terms of wraparound services that we do for Head Start and truly they deserve that. But that same kind of wraparound services is what we truly need for the other levels, whether VPI and so forth, be able to connect with the parents and the importance of the, and how, the importance that the parents have in the education of their children is so emphasized in Head Start, that is one of the predominant factors that makes for the success of that program. And I commend Dawn and her staff, because it was an eye-opener for me, you know, in the first two years when I was on the board. And I'm glad that Barron has been able to pick up on that passion for that, because it is truly, once you've been through it, you do become passionate about it. And thank you, Dawn, for carrying that forward.
Thank you. I did want to add that we have a staff member that is a VPI registrar and she also does ESOL. And she's been able to, and she, she's been able to do a little bit with the families. So we've been able to reach out to her when we have some, so we have a little bit happening. The McKinney-Vento Grant, there's a three-year grant with a, and they have a three-year person that we're working with too. And so she's been able to reach out to the VPI parents specifically as well. So she and I have been really working together too, to coordinate services, so that we don't want to duplicate on the Head Start side. We want to make sure that what she can provide, we give that to VPI.
Mr. Blain.
I understand that to have a VPI student, you need funds for that. In the school division, you have to have housing and the teachers and so on. But if, and you indicated that you could come to the school board and request additional VPI students, if, with some sort of funding from them. What, how much do you figure it would cost for us to approve one student? I mean, if you, if you came and said, look, I have one student, I need $1,000 for the year for this one student or whatever.
This is all just estimate from my head, but I believe that the county, the state says, the state says you get $6,000 per child, but that's not the cash. That's when you put in your match, it becomes 6,000. It's a little bit, when I was first here, it's like, oh, 6,000 per child, but, but really it's not. It's 6,000 per child when the county puts in their match. So I think it might be 4,000 and then 2,000, it's 25%. But that's, but then there's a different way that you can get that match. The Head Start match, we can do just services. VPI match has to be cash. But I know Mr. Treyer has that number exactly. Mr. Treyer could tell you exactly for one VPI child, what the state gives us and then what the county has to put in.
The reason I have this interest, it's just ongoing for the, with the young kids, because elementary principals, a number of told me, probably half the principals say half of their children coming to enroll for kindergarten never have a book, have had a book in their hand. And these kids are two years behind starting off. And so my problem is, how do we find who these young people are and who's qualified? We have two programs if they're economically qualified and other things. So that's, that's my concern, or interest, I should say. What can we do aggressively to see if we can expand our educational opportunities for these young people that especially need them?
I think that, you know, the Rover, I think is going to be a great help when they're out in the neighborhoods, because we're putting books in children's hands, the first thing. And then, you know, parents get on the bus and she's got resources for them to see as well. And then just the, having the applications there too, especially if, if they target certain areas in the county. I think the, the families that we, that, I know we're reaching, you know, most of the families that, because they know where we are, but personally, I believe that there's more families out in Berkeley and Livingston that are, don't always apply. And I don't know if it's just their proximity to the schools or they have family members. There's no daycares out there, but they have, you know, the families out there have relatives. There's a lot of relatives and things, so sometimes I think they have family care and they might not be applying for the program.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the training. We have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Blain, second by Ms. Shelley, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.